Okay, ready Hannah? Like to call this meeting order. This is the regular meeting Monroe Planning Commission Monday, February thirteenth. We're at seven PM on the dot. How would you take a role?
I would be happy to. Commissioners present in establishing a quorum Commissioners Blair Walker Nugent Lockhart Lewis and Bull. And members of the Community Human Services Advisory Board present. We have Tony Balk and Marcy Scott Weiss.
Thank you. This time we have set aside time for public comments. Members of the audience in person and on Zoom are allowed three minutes to present to Planning Commission. Do we have anybody that's signed up? Terry? Would you step up to the mic? Just give your, do we make them say address or just general vicinity? Area that they're from, name and areas.
Okay, Terry Kastner, resident of Black Horse Community over by the Frehlands.
Good, thank you.
Okay, I understand we have three minutes. I'll rush through three minutes, comfortable at four minutes?
Well, we say three minutes.
Okay. All right, you tell me when to go?
Go ahead.
Okay, basically, I'm here to request for a code amendment to the setbacks on side yards for the installation of open air metal RV covers. My understanding of the setback rules or their requirements are intended to help ensure home security, privacy, uniform appearance, environmental protection and public access to plumbing gas and electrical utilities. The RV cover in question is a metal RV cover, a product produced by West Coast metal buildings. It measures fourteen foot wide by thirty-eight foot long by twelve foot high. The RV covers purchased as a kit for assembly on site. The materials consist of two by two fourteen gauge material base, two by two fourteen gauge steel posts, fourteen gauge steel trusses, eighteen gauge braces, purlins and hatch channels and twenty-nine gauge steel roofing panels. The base rails are anchored to the concrete driveway pad with five eighths inch anchors, bolts and washers. All parts consist of non-combustible materials, will not ignite or burn when subjected to fire or heat. All parts are either bolted together or screwed together to allow for disassembly and removal or relocation. There are no permanent attachments. The RV cover is a standalone structure with no attachments to the primary home. The RV cover was primarily selected because it is not a permanent structure and is one that could be disassembled and moved to a new location if preferred. The RV cover panels are pewter gray to match the home color. The roof cover panels extend three foot down on each side of the RV cover. The RV cover is open on all four sides. The RV cover allows unrestricted access for first responders to the primary structure. The RV cover location on the property is in the side yard alongside the garage house behind the six-foot fence. And the side yard is twenty-foot wide. The Black Horse Homeowners Associations and homeowners associations in general are afforded the authority to establish and enforce rules and covenants for the properties and residents. The powers of an HOA are typically outlined in the covenants, conditions and restrictions or CCRs. Article thirteen of the Black Horse Homeowners Association, CCRs, assigns responsibility to the Architectural Control Committee to review proposed plans and specifications for residences, accessory structures, examples, garden shed, tool sheds, dollhouses, playground equipment, et cetera, fences, walls, recreational facilities such as hot tubs, spas, basketball hoops, tennis courts, swimming pools and other exterior structures to be placed upon the properties. No exterior addition or structural alteration may be made until plans and specifications showing the nature, kind, shape, height and materials and location of the proposed structure or alterations have been submitted to and approved in writing by the committee. The committee shall also review proposals to change the exterior color of homes in the plot. The committee shall determine whether the exterior design and location of proposed structure, alterations or color changes harmonize with the surrounding structures, the surrounding natural built environment and aesthetic character of the other homes in the plat. The Black Horse Architectural Control Committee reviewed the metal RV cover literature and the proposed location of the RV cover to be installed behind the six-foot fence in a location of the side yard at a distance of approximately four feet from the primary structure and two feet from the property line fence. The location of the RV cover to the neighboring home is approximately twenty-two feet. The RV cover faces the side of the neighbor's garage and does not affect the security or privacy of the neighbor, provides for a uniform appearance with other structures of the primary residence and does not adversely affect the environmental protections and does not interfere with public access to plumbing gas and electrical utilities. Furthermore, the neighbor does not object to the location or appearance of the RV cover. My request to the Planning Commission is to consider an amendment to the current code to allow placement of RV covers on side yards, even though the RV cover may not comply with the five-foot setback rule from the property line, provided a homeowners association architectural control committee has reviewed and approved the placement as compliant with the covenants, conditions and restrictions of the recognized homeowners association. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Terry, before you go, would you state your relationship to the HOA?
Uh, yeah, I happen to be the president of it and
And this, this structure is already
The structure is already upright and yes, right.
It is. Anywhere neighbors.
We are neighbors. Yes, Jay's got the nicest yard in the community. So, yes.
So. This full disclosure.
Right.
They've talked to me before and
No.
To this, I just want you to know. That I would recuse myself from any. You know, discussion. Thank you, Terry.
My pleasure. And if there are any other questions, I would be happy to take them too. Yeah. And with that, do I just leave?
Unless you want to hear how government works.
No, I think I've heard sometimes before, but I do appreciate the invitation. Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. Okay. No, since there were no questions. We'll keep this meeting going if we may. Looks like there's a lot of material to be presented. So I'd love to get any edits or comments on the minutes from we have minutes from last meeting, January, well, the last actual planning commission meeting, January twenty-third. Any edits? Oh, awesome. Good to see you, Liz.
Good to see everybody. Sorry for missing last week. That is my edit is that it does state that present was Commissioner Liz Nugent and I was, I had emailed Hannah, so it should be marked as excused as far as I understand it.
Excused rather than present, but she was excused. Perfect.
Noted. I will make that edit.
Melanie?
I move to approve the minutes from the January ninth or twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Planning Commission with the amendment stated.
I second the motion.
Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posted. Motion passes. Thanks, everyone. Okay. Old Business, five point one multi-family property tax exemption program. So we have with us members of the Community Human Services Advisory Board and Anita will be presenting.
Oh, thank you. Yes. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and CHASAD members. It's nice to see everyone tonight and then everybody online. So for tonight's joint meeting, we're going to be talking about the multi-family housing property tax exemption program or MFTE. And tonight we have a guest speaker. We have Chris Collier. He is from the Housing Authority of Snohomish County and he's the program manager for the Alliance for Housing Affordability. He will do, be doing a presentation on tax shifts and how that relates to the MFTE program. And so he will give his presentation first and then he'll be happy to answer any questions. And then at that time, we'll go ahead and let Chris go and then I have a short presentation for you as well. And then we'll have time for discussion and questions. So for now, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the introduction, Anita. Am I coming through? Okay. For folks in person online. Okay. Great. Well, feel free. I can't see the dais right now, so feel free to jump in with any questions as we go. But I will share my screen and give you a brief presentation on this. Share. There we go. Is that coming through? Okay for folks? I'm paranoid about hybrid meetings, so I want to make sure everything's good. Okay, so very quickly, I'll go over the multi-family tax exemptions and details, tax shifts like Anita discussed. But first, before I get to that, what the heck is the Alliance for Housing Affordability? I'm the program manager for the Alliance for Housing Affordability. It's a part of the Housing Authority. It was created in two thousand and thirteen. It's a fancy way of saying a interlocal collaboration between the listed jurisdictions, including Monroe. I cover pretty much every large jurisdiction in Snohomish County with the exception of Bothell and Sultan and Goldbar and Darrington. So the purpose of the alliance is to provide the members with data and analytics, which you'll see at the very tail end, technical expertise, which is the bulk of this presentation, figuring out the ins and outs of this, this program and education and outreach to the member jurisdictions and their communities. My purpose, my goal is to assist you and the community at large in understanding and responding to housing affordability and its shortage. So this is really the responding part. So with that out of the way, a quick background of what the alliance is. Basically, I'm your multi-tool. If you need anything understood or explained for housing, you can tell Anita, you can tell Kate Lance to reach out to me and say, Chris, figure this out. And it's my job to do that. So I welcome any and all questions. If you have any that I can't answer at the end of tonight, I'll be happy to research those for you. So before we get started, a little bit of detail on the multi-family tax exemption on the policy, the policy side before we get to the numbers side. The date that you submit a exemption from property taxes matters. There's three major outcomes for this program depending on how the city chooses to act in this matter. The first is if you submit a certificate of tax exemption between January first and approximately October thirty-first. I want to stress that that's approximate. You're submitting the exemption certificate before the tax rolls close and it's entered in that year, basically at that time. What this means is that the new construction value of the exempted property will be exempted and not part of the highest lawful levy calculations for the city until, in the other taxing districts, until the exemption expires. That's a little wonky, but it, that's something that we can dig into more later or in follow-up questions after tonight's presentation. If you want to get into that, that level of detail. The most salient part of all this and what I'll spend most of my time talking about is the tax shift. That a tax shift will occur in the next calendar year. So if we submitted a certificate right now for twenty-twenty-three, the tax shift would occur in twenty-twenty-four. Because we're submitting within this January to October window. If you submit after October thirty-first, again, approximately, and you're more in the November, December timeframe, you're submitting after the tax rolls are closed. And so the new construction will be included in the next year's rolls and part of the highest lawful levy calculations going forward. The taxing districts, including the city, will lose the property tax from the parcel in question that is exempted for one year. However, that can be recouped via a refund levy. What the heck is a refund levy? It is a bit of a separate presentation. I'd be happy to assist in understanding that and digging into that. If that's necessary or desired, but a refund levy is how the taxing, the taxing district's budget would be made whole, just one year delay. So the tax shift then begins the next year. So for example, if we submit a submittal or a certificate, excuse me, on December first of twenty-twenty-three, the tax shift occurs thereafter in twenty-twenty-five, January first of twenty-twenty-five till the end of the exemption. The third option is that the city can opt to not collect its full one percent property tax. Instead, you can kind of estimate what the tax shift would be, lower its collected tax rate and avoid the tax, tax shift, effectively banking property tax levy capacity. So these are the three options broadly speaking that you have in policy before you. So this is a bit of a nitty-gritty on the policy side. It's just something to keep in mind more for staff and city leadership, city administration. So let's get into what the actual project looks like. What, what is the multi-family tax exemption? To explain this, I'm using tax code area zero zero five three zero, which is basically most of the city of Monroe. There are some parts of the city that fall outside this tax code area, I believe. So, but this, this is basically Monroe. I'm basically looking at Monroe proper. I am hypothetically working with a one million dollar project. One million dollars of tax-exempt project. You could have in a, a multi-family tax exempt project, commercial, taxpaying, commercial property that pays property tax, just like any new construction in the city. I want to stress that these are hypothetical figures. It's very easy for me to change these figures, as you'll see, to hypothesize different scenarios as we go forward, if you have different, different ideas. I thought about including a commercial set aside or a commercial taxpaying piece, but I didn't want to get this all, all sorts of messy. But that is a component that I can work on in the future if you have questions or if that comes up. The other important piece of the tax exemption is that we're talking about the average parcel, the average homeowner. This would affect commercial and industrial parcels as well. But really, we're talking about what's the impact to homeowners? And so the average home, average residential parcel value in Monroe is valued at four forty-four, six hundred. So this is my hypothetical, not my hypothetical, this is the average home value. But to, if your home is valued more or less, the impact will be more or less depending on the value of your house. Because we're taxed on assessed value. The other thing that we have to recognize is this is projecting into an uncertain future. We don't know what budgets for taxing districts, the city, the fire district, the school district and others will be next year, the year after and after. So the further we go into the future, the less certain we are about what the tax impact will be. That's something that we can't avoid because obviously we don't know the future. If we did, I would have put more money on the Chiefs and the Eagles last night. So with that out of the way, what's the basis, basis that we're working on? These are the taxing districts that make up zero zero five three zero. At the top, you have Snohomish County. Snohomish County is at the top of all Snohomish County taxing districts. We look at its total budget of ninety-four hundred thousand, yep, ninety, ninety-seven million dollars. Its total assessed value of a hundred and seventy billion dollars. And the assessor then calculates the rate per one thousand dollars of assessed value on the parcel that needs to be charged to achieve that budget that's set by the taxing district. So this is one. We have a lot more. We have county conservation futures, a part of Snohomish County, the city of Monroe, regional fire, regional fires, permanent levy, hospital district, inter-county, inter-county rural library, school district one zero three and Washington State. So this is the figures now. You may recognize Monroe's budget. If we want to calculate a tax exemption, what that would hypothetically happen next year, the way to, the way to rough this in is subtract one million dollars from each total assessed value item and then recalculate our levy. So that's pretty simple to explain. Just subtract one million dollars, the exempt amount, recalculate the rate to achieve the total budget. So let's look at that in a little more detail. So the point here is we still have to achieve our set budget from the previous slide. We still have to achieve that ninety-seven million dollars from Snohomish County. So the taxpaying parcels are going to have their levy rates adjusted to account for that one million dollar exemption. So here is in brief, in text form, the math. You take the assessed value currently, you subtract the exemption amount, you obtain a new assessed value. You take the new assessed value divided by the total budget we have to achieve, multiply by one thousand, that produces the new rate that is going to be applied to each taxpaying parcel. The new rate times the average home value, four four four, six hundred, is the new tax that's going to be paid by that parcel to that line item. So in this case, we're talking about Snohomish County. But then you have to, before we get to the next step, you have to subtract the new tax from the old tax, you calculate the total change. This is the dollars, really the cents change to individual tax parcels in that taxing area. And again, this is for only twenty-twenty-two. Hypothetically, if this project was online, right now, it's a snap of our fingers, this is what would change. Then you repeat this for every taxing district that I listed on the previous slide. And if this is hurting your head because it's a lot of math, you're right. I spent a lot of quality time trying to figure this out and make it not, not do it the manual way. So. Let me show you what that looks like. The automated way, Excel interlude. If you'll allow me to switch my screen to, are you seeing Excel now instead of PowerPoint? Okay, so this is what it looks like. Across the top, you have the exemption amount, one million dollars. You have the average residential value. On a separate tab, I've put in the appropriate taxing district and I've got all of these line items that you might recognize, county, city of Monroe, regional fire, hospital district one, rural library and so on. You have the total assessed values for each one of these things, each one of these taxing district areas. So this is the total assessed value of every single parcel and every single improvement in Snohomish County is one hundred and seventy billion dollars. The current rate, the tax to collect. So you saw all of this in the previous, two slides previous. So the multi-family tax exemption change in the blue cells. This is the new assessed value. You can see it's a little bit less than the orange shaded cells by one million dollars. So then a little bit of math, what does that look like? What's the new rate calculated? As you see in the top here, just divided by these two things divided, multiplied by a thousand, produces the new rate. You then take the home value that you're looking at. It gives you the new tax and I also calculated the old tax, esto presto, a little subtraction. So this is the change in taxes paid for the average home by taxing district in TCA zero zero five three zero. Now, one thing to remember is there's a lot of other parcels in the county's assessed value pool. It's every single parcel in the county. So every single parcel in Snohomish County will see their taxes, their tax rate adjusted as well as every parcel in the rural library district, school district one zero three. So while this has the greatest impact in tax district zero zero five three zero, which is where the exemption occurs, all the other taxing authorities, taxing, taxing authorities that show up in this taxing district, but also other ones, you know, this effect is felt there too. So the city of Everett will feel this, the city of Lynnwood will feel this too. So this is not a burden born solely by city of Monroe residents. It is one that is borne by the entire county and in fact, the whole state because somewhere in here, there's one cent, one thousandth of a cent in change in state property taxes paid. The city of Monroe is right here. So in the case of a taxpaying parcel in the city of Monroe, the estimated impact would be thirteen cents. If we're talking only about taxes paid to the city of Monroe. So summing up this total change, this total change is thirty cents. If right now, a one million dollar tax, tax exemption was applied to the city's tax rolls, the tax paid, if we are still going to pay twenty-twenty-two taxes, because I'm looking at last year's tax rolls, would be thirty cents higher on the average home in the city of Monroe for the entire year, not per month, not for anything else, for the entire year. The average tax, taxes paid to all taxing districts will go up by thirty cents. So simple multiplication, eight years, two dollars and forty-three cents, twelve years, three dollars and sixty-five cents would be the total tax impact per parcel in tax code area zero zero five three zero and to a lesser extent, as we get further and further away and have fewer and fewer of these taxing districts showing up. So like hospital district two, not affected by this. School districts, you know, one zero whatever, one zero five, not affected by this. So their assessed values do not change. So. Yep. So something that this can do, I can easily change the assessment value if Anita or Kate Lance call me and say, Chris, it's a one point five million dollar tax exemption, one five. Oops, that's fifty million dollars. That's too much. You've got a high rise. Look out. So if it's a one point five million dollar tax exemption, the tax impact is forty-six cents. Okay, but my house is worth three hundred thousand dollars. The tax impact is thirty-one cents. For a home that's valued at three hundred thousand. You see what I'm doing here. It's very easy to adjust this. I have a separate piece of this program that allows me to look at what the taxpaying commercial part of the property can do or what, what that will do to tax rates. So one thing to remind you is that this is a current exemption that falls off after eight or twelve years, depending on the city's policies. And after that, we flip this, turn it negative. Now we're looking at negative fifteen million, uh, one point five million dollars. And so after eight to twelve years, everyone's taxes go down by a commensurate amount. And it, and actually more as we factor into construction being added back into the highest law, a little less actually, as we factor into construction to highest lawful levy. So at this point, you can interrupt and say nerd, but
I actually, for a clarification?
Yes, sir.
Um, that in your example, the one point five million is
Yes.
value of the improvements, correct?
Yes, that is the exempted value of the improvement. This is not the total site value. It's not the dirt and it's not the total improvement value. So if it's like two stories of residential on top of one story of taxpaying commercial, the taxpaying commercial does not show up on this sheet.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, that, that's something I toyed with doing, but it would have gotten, it would have made this presentation much longer and much more confusing. So if that, if that comes to pass, that there is a mixed use property, then I'd be more than happy to work through those figures myself. So. Let's see, let me reset this to how I had it before. Oops. There. So one thing to note is we're looking at thirty cents. Let's drop the value of hypothetically, we have a one hundred thousand dollar valued parcel. The total tax impact is going to be seven cents. If it's two million dollars. It's fourteen cents. If it's three million dollars, I bet you can guess what it's gonna be. It'll be twenty-one cents. So coincidentally, just by happy coincidence, these figures produce a approximately seven cent increase for every hundred thousand dollars. So if by some chance you have a one, a one million dollar exemption that applies through this program, you can kind of rough in what is going to cost per the value, per hundred thousand dollars of assessed home value. About seven cents. If you want to hold on to that as a benchmark. Of course, I don't know what the actual submittal will be. Back to Excel, interlude over. So again, at the low end, we're looking at seven cents of increased taxes per year through the tax shift. At the high end, say eight hundred thousand dollar parcels, you're looking at fifty-five cents of higher taxes per year. Again, like I said, seven cents per, per hundred thousand dollars, assuming it's a one million dollar exemption. And just for the record, just so everyone knows that this is here, this is just a copy paste of what I was showing you. Again, just for the record, this is exactly what you just saw. So a couple of conclusions coming on the home stretch. The multi-family tax exemption impacts the testing, taxing districts, including the city and county, the taxpaying parcels or both. As I mentioned in the prelude slide. But it's in both directions, as I mentioned, after eight to twelve years, when the exemption falls off, taxes go down by a commensurate amount. And projects with non-exempt commercial yield benefits earlier. And the, the point here is that mixed use projects are king. They're harder, they're harder to build, they're harder to permit, they're harder to do in pretty much every form, but they pay their returns. They, they are worth it. If that is possible. So if I were to advise one thing, it would be to seek out or prioritize mixed use development for a variety of reasons. The varied impact is based on the value of the parcel. So we're kind of working with averages here, the average home value. I don't think there's actually a home valued at four four four, six hundred. It's just the average. So. But in any case, we're talking about less than a dollar per year on average. Less than one dollar. Almost regardless of the value of your property on average. And finally, the data certificate submissions matters. So plan accordingly. That's really a note for Lance, Kate and Anita and Deborah. And this is really important. So one more slide to go. This is really important. Why? Changing gears from the nuts and bolts of the tax exemption, I want to explain why something like this is very valuable and worth the work of your staff worth one dollar or less more for taxpaying parcels. Quite simply, it's because Monroe's workforce cannot afford to live in the city. Currently, Monroe's workforce is unable to live there. In this graph, I'm looking at the average required income per month for a mortgage on single-family residential condos and townhomes from left to right. So that's ownership housing. This is what you need to make to pay the mortgage month to month on a single-family home in Monroe, just over four thousand five hundred dollars in twenty-twenty-two. And then looking at average advertised rents for the last three months of twenty-twenty-two. You can see that the average one bed is just shy of two advertised two thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-two. That number is going to go up. That number is going to go up as we head into the summer of two, twenty twenty three. So here we have ownership and rent circled in red. This black dashed line is the average wage for a worker in the city of Monroe per month. The average wage earner in Monroe makes about fifteen hundred dollars a month. If you combine wages, congratulations, you can now, the two of you can be roommates in a one or two bedroom apartment. Or you can own a condo or townhome together, but single family owner homeownership remains out of reach. The point that I'm making here is that the people that will benefit from this are the people that currently likely, possibly, potentially, that currently work in the community and and serve the community of Monroe in their jobs. This graph expressed in a single number is that eighty eight percent of the city's workforce works in Monroe but lives elsewhere. And that number has been going up since twenty, since this data was collected in two thousand and two. So there is a tangible benefit to a program like the multifamily tax exemption. And that is that it will allow people that work in the city of Monroe have a strong connection to the community to also live there and be deep, more deeply ingrained into the community in which they serve if they so choose. They will have that option, not the requirement, but the option is what the multifamily tax exemption will provide if it's enacted. So thank you very much, I'll stick around for any questions. And as Anita said, then I'll bow out and hand it over to her.
Early on that it is advantages of doing this type of tax exemption in a mixed use zone area and such. Would you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Simply that if we're worried about the tax impacts on taxpayers in the city, this will reduce that tax impact immediately, that that commercial part, whatever it is. And that's why I didn't do it really is because I was like, is fifty percent, is it like fifty fifty too much, is thirty seventy, that's kind of confusing. But at the end of the day. You will have the the improvement value of that commercial taxpaying structure immediately reducing the tax impact, the tax shift on other parcels in the city. Because it will be paying its its share of the property taxes that are otherwise going to be shifted. And so whatever that value is, it's going to reduce the impact on parcels across the city and all taxing districts. So it from through that lens of we're worried about people paying more in property taxes. A mixed use project would reduce that on top of it will ultimately be of more value to the city through through the property tax lens and local business and employment and so on and so forth, sales tax and more and more. Right away.
So your example was a million dollar exemption. Let's assume since we're doing hypotheticals, that would produce four units of housing. And if I remember correctly, this a developer who commits twenty, at least twenty five percent of their units to affordable housing would qualify. So my thirty cents of that mythical house that you had paid taxes would create one affordable unit.
Yes, however, you're also creating three more units and every unit counts. That's every unit, every unit counts in terms of reducing overall prices. This little sidebar, as I've probably mentioned, if I, I think I presented to the planning commission before many years ago. Puget Sound Regional Council estimates we're fifty thousand units of housing behind right now. And that's the fundamental driver of why prices remain, remain and continue to be high is that is that unit shortage. And regardless of the income restriction of units, those three other units that are not income restricted will aid in reducing prices that tiny, tiny bit.
This is a supply and demand.
Absolutely.
The price is stabilized.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
One other thing. The other advantage is if you do this in a zone that hasn't seen a lot of investment in either commercial or residential, this is a great program to encourage that. I lived in Tacoma for a long time and I know several neighborhoods that revitalized their business district by utilizing this commercial on the first floor. Rental units upstairs, but also get them two different streams of income that we we reacted to the economy at the time differently.
Absolutely. I've lived in mixed use, a mixed use building before, and frankly, I loved it. It was, it was terrible for my waistline because it was a restaurant downstairs, but I loved it, it was great. So any other questions, I wel- I welcome if you have further questions after, after the presentation's over, after I take off, feel free to let Anita know. She and I are in regular contact, she's the city's delegate to the alliance, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have through her.
Just one more, if you could for.
Yes, sir.
I do have like a two part question. So one is that Monroe currently does have a program for tax exemption that no one has taken advantage of yet. I don't don't know if you know the specifics of how they're different from what you're with this other proposal is. And second off, can you tell us of some places that is seeing success with this?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the current program, I'd have to check with Anita for to compare and contrast on that. So Anita and I will get together sometime this week to talk about that. Other cities that have an MFTE are Everett and Linwood, Mountain Lake Terrace just adopted one. And other cities, Edmunds toyed with it in two thousand seventeen, and I don't recall why they didn't pursue it for a development around a neighborhood in the south of Edmunds. It's also widely used in King County, so there's lots of examples statewide. And some in Snohomish County as well. Is that answering your question, would you like more detail on that?
I know we keep hearing that people are using it, I know King County. I just wanted a more specific example of some relatable city like ours that has used it in success and like a number. So yes, a developer came in and offset a million dollars and made four units or two million and eight units or some some actual success that's happening because we're hearing a lot about this program, but I haven't heard any specifics or seen any of that where it's working.
Yeah, I Everett is the best example right now, I'll reach out to them, I have a good close connection with Everett, they've been working through this a lot. So I'll reach out to them, get their figures, I know that they have had a BMFTE on the books and it's been working for many years now. Alan Giffen, former planning director of the city of Everett, shared a lot of information with me back five, six years ago. So it is in use and I will share that information with you. Oh, I know it's not comparable to Monroe exactly. Go ahead.
Right, I have one part of a concern because we're also supposed to be thinking about displacement. Sometimes a developer will come in by a piece that is, you know, not that already has affordable housing, let's say, and so they get it cheaper than they are only going to make one affordable unit and three that won't be affordable. So I could see there's a concern of this type of a plan backfiring. So asking some detailed questions about it.
Yeah, the state legislature is, has acknowledged that as an issue that they're of concern for them. And there is a bill floating around Olympia right now that is, that allows I, I'm not going to quote it exactly because I don't recall it perfectly is, but basically it allows the MFTE to be extended if it continues that affordability period. And it's quite a healthy extension of that. So and as for displacement, there's two things. One, there are methods and ways that the city can help current residents basically buy back in or rent back in to a neighborhood, there's different other policy solutions a city can embark on or pursue independently. And also, you know, if absent new units, displacement is going to get people one way or another. It's going to happen even if people are in income restricted units. You know, from my perspective inside the housing authority, I have watched, I haven't directly responded to, but I've watched complaints from current residents saying, well, I'm in this income restricted property owned by the housing authority, but rent has gone up. It's like, yes, rent has gone up, but it's still three hundred dollars less. Tragically, people are are on fixed income, social security, disability, and so on and so forth. And displacement pressure still reaches them, so it's it is important to take, make new units where we can, make more affordable units where we can than were there before. Because even if we really throw the brakes on things or because we're trying to prevent displacement now, later we'll pay the price. It's, it's a rock and a hard place to beat all others. So I sympathize with that, and I think that there are policy solutions to work us out of that.
One question would be, wouldn't one of those be that since with this, we designate the area that we would be doing, allowing the MFT. So we would not want to designate it somewhere that already has some affordable housing.
That is definitely something to consider. However, if you think that, you know, maybe you want to work with a developer, work through Anita and Kate and Lance to kind of scope out what is possible, what's feasible with developers and builders. If at the end of the day, you would yield a higher number of affordable units and are there now, I think it would still be advisable. But there's nuance to every project, every proposal, so I'm probably getting too far ahead of my skis to go any further. On that.
I appreciate your answering the questions, thank you.
Any other questions, I'll stick around as long as you want me.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On that last slide, very bottom where you say where it's eighty eight percent work in Monroe but live elsewhere.
Yes.
That, where do you derive that percentage from?
That is from a census tool called LEHD on the map. The datas, the data, I forgot to mention, I apologize, this is from two thousand nineteen, so it does not reflect the pandemic and its impacts. But that's a census data tool that is extremely interesting. I'm trying not to gush about it too much, but again, LEHD on the map, I'd be more than happy to dig into that and dive into that with you. You can do a lot more analysis on the selection area, in this case, the city limits of Monroe. Yeah, that's, it's gone from, Monroe actually has had a smaller spread than most cities. In two thousand and two, that figure was just above eighty percent. Worked but did not live in the city, now it's eighty eight. The city, my most, my other comparable is Arlington, that's gone. I believe it was seventy percent in two thousand and two lived, but or worked but did not live there. And now it's well over eighty four, eighty five percent that work but do not live in the city of Arlington. You can look at, you know, where people are coming from, where their, it just their travel time, all sorts of interesting stuff. So I can, I'll nerd out about that if you give me even the slightest chance.
Thank you. Jake, did you have additional question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that I'm kind of visualizing how this would play out correctly. So let's say I'm a developer and I come in and I want to build townhomes, so three of them. And I can't remember if we started talking about what percentage they would have to do affordable housing for to get the exemption. But let's say, sorry, it's twenty five percent, so I'm going to build four townhomes. How does that, will you tell me how that kind of plays out after they build them? Does that just mean one of the houses goes for whatever meets the the bracket for low income? And I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not, not experienced with seeing it actually play out, so.
Sure, Anita, is that something your presentation will cover or should I care this, so that might, I don't want to big foot Anita if that's the question better for her.
Yeah, we will probably go over that a little bit more. I don't know if you just maybe have a short answer to it, but.
Okay, um, yeah, it's as Anita will cover, I expect, now having seen the presentation. Let's, let's put it in the context of rentals, I think that's, that's a little easier to grapple with. Is it will be rented to a household at eighty percent of the area median income. I believe Anita has that, I don't have that figure right in front of me. And then the, the property owner will be obligated to ensure that the tenant, in this case, will makes below eighty percent of the median income. And maintain that and annually for the next twelve years. So the eight year tax exemption does not carry the affordability requirement, the twelve year does carry that requirement. And so there is a up to one hundred and twenty percent area median income piece, which is escaping me at the moment, I apologize. So the developer says, I'm going to do this, construction's completed. The city says, great, you've got a sort of, sort of occupancy, and Anita, correct me if I'm wrong, you then submit that exemption to the assessor, depending on when it's submitted. It then, as I covered in that first slide. We look at the tax shift or other, other impacts of that exemption. And then ever after, the tax shift continues and that tenant continues to be below eighty percent of the area median income. So I'm not sure if that quite answered your question.
No, that's, that's helpful, yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation, I love it.
My pleasure, and if that doesn't totally square or make perfect sense, or if you're tomorrow, you're like, what the heck did he say? Please let me know and I'd be more than happy to go through this. I've, I've worked round and round on this, on the concept of the MFTE for over a year. And so I'm more than happy to, you know, stay with you and get you up to speed on it. See, Commissioner Nugent has her hand up.
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation. And I, Anita, if this is a question you're gonna cover more. Please jump in and say so. Commissioner Blair brought up a good point that I had a question about. Have you seen that cities are typically keeping these in certain areas of town, or are they typically spreading them out around their whole city? I know, aren't there certain restrictions that they need to be located close to? Trying to remember the terminology, but I thought they needed to be located like close towards buses and downtown and certain easily accessible.
Transit areas.
Transit and like grocery stores and other accessible, easily accessible areas. But so I'm just curious, do people, are are other cities almost condensing them all in certain parts of town? Or are these more spread throughout their cities? If that question makes sense.
So I do have some examples that I have from the city of Everett that I can show you during my presentation. Also, the RCW states that it has to be in urban center and within a residential targeted area. So as far as each city's ordinance, I would have to take a look at that and I, and I can do some research to see. Like you said, how spread out are they, are they all concentrated in one area of town? I definitely can get that information for you.
Carl Arm, if you're looking for names, Carl Almgren at Linwood can help you out with that. I think they've designated city center in Linwood as their MFT zone right now. So, yeah, the maps I have somewhere on this computer, I have the maps for Everett's current MFT zones, and I'm sure Anita's got that as well, so. So and if you, or if you'd like a copy, let me know, Anita.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, and otherwise I'll get out of the way and let Anita take the stage.
And I can always follow up with Chris too, if we have questions as we talk throughout the night, I can get back to Chris too, so. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you all so much, welcome any and any and all further questions. And if you have further questions about more of the sad data of affordability and kind of why we are where we are. I'd be more than happy to share that anytime, so thank you all again, and have a great night, enjoy Anita's presentation.
So I just have a quick PowerPoint that I'm gonna pull up. Okay. So in my presentation tonight, I'm, I'm going to kind of go through the background on the MFT program. And we've talked about this a couple of times at planning commission as well as a CHSA meeting. So we'll just go ahead and go through that as stated before, I do have an example from the city of Everett. They have about twenty or so developments and MFT developments. And then I do have a contact over there and she provided me with an Excel spreadsheet that kind of lists the number of units, the exemption period, so we can kind of talk through that as well. So just in case you missed any of those meetings where we talked about the MFT. This kind of explains, this comes from commerce, this kind of explains what the program is. It states the RCW and it also applies to new construction. So basically exemptions for new construction conversion and rehabilitation of multifamily residential improvements with at least four units. So under these exemptions, a property owner does not have to pay property taxes on the residential improvements for a given number of years. So kind of like what Chris already stated, that the property owner would still pay tax on the land in any non residential residential. So kind of like what Chris already stated, that the property owner would still pay tax on the land in any non-residential improvements, like the commercial portion of the mixed-use building as, as what was described earlier. So Liam was our intern during the summer and he gave a great presentation to Planning Commission on August eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. It was a high-level overview of, of the program and how it works. A similar presentation was given to the Chassab board members at the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting by Community Development Director Lance Bailey. We had a further discussion on the MFT program at Planning Commission on December twelfth. And in doing research for this program, I did, or we did find that the city has already established an urban center and residential target, targeted area, which the RCW states. And through resolution and ordinance in two thousand and nine, and that is located in the downtown commercial area. The ordinance and resolution is attached to this agenda bill and it also shows a map of the area that this has been established. Just wanted to also mention that attached to this agenda bill is a tax shift kind of FAQ. And so it's a very helpful tool and how that works. And then that came from the Department of Commerce. So at our last Planning Commission meeting, when we talked about this program, there was some inquiries on, you know, what other cities are doing, how many other cities are doing this program? How is it working? And so we did some research and found that there are fifty-one cities and counties that have an MFT program. Seven of those are Snohomish County cities. Snohomish and Marysville currently do not have any MFT developments. For the, for the cities that I know of that have developments are Everett, Linwood. And as Chris stated, it looks like Edmonds was going to have one. I'm not quite sure what happened to that. But also in the packet, there's an attachment called considerations and other information, and that was compiled by our intern Liam as well. And it gives more information on some case studies. And it also talks about some other cities such as Birmingham and Bellingham that have have this program and that are doing some developments there. So if you're interested, there is that information attached to the packet as well. So this is one of the developments that I was forwarded from contact at the city of Everett. And so this one is Park Place Apartments. It is located at three, five, one, five, White Avenue. It was built in two thousand and sixteen. There's eighty-five units. This has a twelve-year exemption. There's seventeen affordable units. And the exemption ends in two thousand and twenty-eight. And then if anyone's interested, I can forward you some other developments that are in Everett. And I also can, I'll look up the contact at Linwood. I can give you some information on those developments as well. So some steps to get this program started is that we will need to revise the Affordable Housing chapter, which already exists in our code. So that's MMC twenty-two point five two. So the, the current code does reference the RCW for the MFT program. But we need to update the code as far as determining if the city wants to have the eight-year, the twelve-year, the twenty-year. How many percentage of units, affordable housing units do we want to have? So all those specifics will go in the, in the update of the code. So that's the, kind of the first thing that we need to get started is, is working on that. The next step is designating the MFT staff. So, so basically that's going to be the, somebody from the Community Development Department, which for now is, is most likely going to be me. And so establishing that program, there's a lot of things that go into it. So we're going to have to create an application process. So when a developer comes in, we're going to have to have that ready to go. We're going to have to issue the exemption certificates when the time comes, when the building is ready to receive final occupancy. We need to develop materials for the public, so to let people know what's going on, what's the program, so kind of like what we're talking about today. Possibly make some brochures, a website, and things like that, so that the public know, or developers know how the program works in the city. So also we would need to provide some outreach and training to property managers and owners, letting know what the reporting process is and what's involved with this program. And another part of this is once the, the, the units are built, it's not over. So we will have to continue to monitor and oversight. So in that monitoring, we need to collect annual reports from all MFT properties. And we have to submit the reports to Commerce. So it's an ongoing process. We have to do this. We have to make sure that, kind of what Chris was talking about, that those affordable housing units remain affordable. So that's the checks and balances that we need to do in, in our department. So that was all for my presentation today. I just wanted to leave some time for any discussion and questions that you may have.
So this does sound like a lot of work. And I mean, if we're talking about one hypothetical million-dollar development with four units and one affordable housing, that's on eighty percent of median income. It seems like a lot of work to get that, for one thing. And second of all, I'm reading the ordinance from two thousand and nine. And I see that it designates the urban center. You had mentioned that we already have a tax exemption program, but I don't see what in here that it's saying that. Is there a different ordinance?
Um, yes. So in our current code, the UDRs, it's chapter twenty-two point five two, under the Affordable Housing chapter.
And how is that different than what you're asking for this to be?
Um, it's not different because it references the RCW of the MFT. It's just that, that's, that's basically all it does. It doesn't, it's not a, it's not a complete ordinance as far as, you know, letting people know what that percentage of affordable housing units are and the different years of exemptions. So there is a model code that Commerce has completed. So it's something that you have to tailor it to your city, of course. But so that's in, in the discussion of drafting the ordinance, I would come back and talk to the planning commission and we would, we would determine how we want that ordinance to look like.
So my point for discussion, I just want to point out, though, the downtown Monroe area is already where our more affordable housing is. And as this even says, and one example that's already happening in downtown Monroe, this even says that the improvements of a property. So I think we discussed a few meetings ago where someone that had affordable, pretty affordable apartments, had everyone move out, revamped them all. And now is charging really high rates. So that same scenario would occur. That person would be getting a tax exemption on the improvements and they would have one kind of affordable unit. So I, I really feel like this would do more harm than good by displacing residents that already live in affordable areas downtown.
Okay. And another option is we can be more restrictive in our code. So we can put something in there. And this is something that we're also doing with the Cal Plan because we're required by the state to come up with some displacement policies. And then we also have a grant that will be used towards figuring that out. So the racially disparate impacts, which includes displacement. So those are some, some things that we'll come back to the Planning Commission on. We haven't exactly figured out what those will be at this point. We have a couple of displacement strategies in the half, in the Housing Action Plan. But this is something that will come up during the Cal Plan process.
One of those strategies is supposed to be prevention of displacement, I would imagine.
Yeah.
The main one. So I, I really want to highlight my concern that I think that this will displace more affordable housing than it will create.
Okay.
Unless we wanted to note a different zone, an area for this, that is not where the current urban designation from two thousand and nine was figured out.
Yes, and we can, we can do that too. We can pick a different zone. It just has to meet the criteria that the RCW references, but, but I'm sure we could, we could look at other places in the city. That would be my suggestion. Okay.
Deborah, did you have a question?
Uh, not a question, but a comment.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Are you ready? Okay, thank you. A couple of things about the concerns around displacement. We did get a request from a multifamily developer for the North Kelsey site. And that was for, that was actually for market rate housing, multifamily housing. And at that time, their perspective was that they couldn't actually make the project pencil out unless the credit was available to them. And so there are instances where, excuse me, the credit is actually a part of the overall strategy for bringing more multifamily housing to market. So just something for the commissioners to keep in mind as you're considering, you know, what type of credit to allow, whether it's the eight-year or the, or the twelve-years. Is it just for affordable? Or is it just to encourage more multifamily housing? To Chris's earlier point, we have a shortage of, of attached housing, and this is one way to bring more of that to market. The other thing to consider as you're thinking about, you know, where we would want more attached product in our community is whether or not housing can spur economic development along US two. So right now on the corridor of US two, what we have is we have a lot of commercial properties that were built in the sixties, seventies and eighties and maybe ready for redevelopment. And again, to Chris's earlier point, if we can do something that's mixed use, which would be along US two and add a housing component to that, we could actually move some of our attached product to the north side of US two and the railroad tracks, bringing more housing to what is currently a commercial area. We all recognize that commercial retail box store developments are fundamentally changing. And what you see in marketplaces around the Redmond, Kirkland area, for example, is that they're bringing in that attached product in order to drive business to the surrounding businesses to ensure that, that those areas remain vital. And so I think when you're discussing, you know, whether or not you're going to try and put this attached product, you know, with the, with an exemption and where you want to spur, you know, that attached product, it might be along that corridor. So I think you could bring, you know, this tool into the toolbox and potentially drive the development exactly where you want it. And so I, I see a lot of head nods around the table. So maybe that's something you're already considering. This is my first time, you know, listening to this discussion from the Planning Commission. But again, I just wanted to, to bring those things to your attention if you haven't already thought about them. And considering we're updating the comprehensive plan, where you, where you might want to put that product, where that product might make sense in the long run. That would also then allow for the city to have an incentive to bring more transit into our area too, right? That density of, of attached product might also then draw in more service from community transit that we're not currently seeing. So thinking about how do you do transit-oriented development? That might be another way to, to make that available to our residents. So a few thoughts, but thank you for letting me share those.
Thank you. So bottom line, Deborah, is we shouldn't necessarily be dismissive of the eight-year tax exemption, just because it doesn't have an eighty percent AMI component to it.
Yes, exactly. Because again, what I, what we heard back in, you know, twenty nineteen before the pandemic occurred was that in order to bring that attached product to market here in Monroe with the rents. So when you have to figure out that the developer has to build a product where the rents, you know, repay the cost of development, right, of that product. And if we want to see something that's different than what they call garden-style, or I call three-story walk-up. If you want to see podium-style development, where you first have the garage, the parking garage is underneath, and then you have four or five or six stories above that, that's a very expensive product to bring to market. And so the rents that you have to earn off of each one of those units are not going to be affordable, you know, even for people who aren't working in the community. And so in order to bring down that rental price, you know, down to the twenty-five hundred dollars that, you know, was currently the base rate, you have to provide that multifamily tax exemption credit, or you can't bring that rent for the space down, right? They can't earn their, well, what are they looking for in the marketplace now with the cost of living adjustment, a five or six percent return on investment, right? I mean, even when interest rates were low, zero, you know, people, developers were still, you know, with their investors, having to pay back something like a three percent return on investment, you know, even on something that's a twenty or thirty-year product. So again, it's another tool. It's in the toolbox. It's there. If nobody wants to use it, they don't want to use it. But at least we have it available for those that do. I think the bigger question is, where do you want to put it? And I think that's maybe where your policy discussion has been, is you don't want displacement. And you don't want, you know, people to have to walk long distances to get to transit. And you can begin to kind of narrow down then, where does this product make sense in Monroe potentially?
Because hopefully we could all agree that we need more multifamily. I'm looking, my report that I pulled, I looked for the vacant units. It says we have a four-point-three percent vacancy rate. I looked today online for vacant units. The only real ones I could find were a little, there was one at Terra. They have a variety from sixteen hundred to three thousand. Next door, the new ones, those are twenty-four hundred a month, either a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, plus a twenty-four hundred dollar deposit you have to come up with. Those are the only ones I could find available. If, you know, families move into town, want to be part of our community. So hopefully we can all agree that we need more housing. We just maybe disagree on where to put it or the exact style and nature of it. Tony, you had a comment?
Well, Deborah swallowed most of my thunder. I guess part of my question, what are the questions before us that we want to discuss were specific? I think one of them is, Deborah shared, is location, where it's going to be located. It's always easier to throw a community on a blank slate. And if you look for on Highway Two Corridor, that's where a lot of our blank slates are. Park, relax and start. And of course, there's always North Kelsey that's going to be developed someday. It's like, now, would those areas meet the criteria that the state has? Is the zoning allowing multifamily in those areas?
It doesn't.
It doesn't. So at this time, it's, it's, cannot go there. Okay.
So the, the urban, the urban center term is, which is defined by the state is, is, is more broad than, than it may sound like for this case. So it's, it's not, a lot, a lot of times those definitions are tied into transit. But these are, transit is one of them, but there's also the availability of services. So it takes into account areas that may not currently have a lot of transit service.
But for the Highway Two Corridor, the key missing piece is that, is that zone for multifamily?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Now, I take it you did your research and the area that did is what's in our presentation tonight, the, what's known as the old Monroe downtown area? And no other area met the criteria in your eyes?
Oh, no, that's just, that's just the one that's currently designated.
Yeah, so.
Okay, underneath the present law that hasn't, doesn't have these structure underneath to implement it, at least at this time.
Yes. So if we did want to do that, we'd have to take it to council through resolution and ordinance to get another residence target.
So were there other areas that you researched and found met the criteria? Besides the downtown area? Or haven't you done that yet?
We, we haven't done a detailed analysis to look exactly at where those areas really looking for, I guess, looking for some direction of areas that we would want to look at. I think Highway Two and the Kelsey areas, one. And other areas, I, I, I think is, as Commissioner Blair mentioned, there is some there is, there is some advantages to doing areas that don't have, that currently have more affordable housing. I, because when you say affordable housing, there's very specific requirements about income. But you might have areas that are more affordable than others. So, so I think there is, there is some impetus to, to look at some of the areas where we certainly wouldn't have a, a higher potential for displacement. And as you said, preventing displacement is the best strategy.
If I remember correctly from the half report, the area that was, that highlighted displacement was in the area around the west side of one hundred and seventy-ninth Avenue to Highway five twenty- The west side of one hundred and seventy-ninth Avenue uh to Highway five twenty-two was the area that. At least during the HAP report said that there was a high uh concern of displacement, not downtown. I agree with you that displacement is a, an important issue to tackle. The question is in the downtown area, I mean, just describing this taking place, I realized is whether or not the development would happen anyway. Without the, this um tax exemption and at least with the tax exemption, might be an encouragement to preserve one of those units. Out of four or even higher, I mean, that could, we could have a very sophisticated thing saying, oh, in the downtown area. We want one-third of the units to be affordable. And such because of the um, the dynamics of that market presently as far as affordability. Um, as a way of ensuring that um, this got, discouraging displacement. The other question um that's probably before us is whether or not we wanted to do a eight or twelve year tax exemption? And would you highlight for us novices uh what the difference is between the two? Besides eight and twelve years?
So, so, so yeah, the, the eight year, the eight year exemption is just for market rate, so there's no affordable housing requirement.
Okay.
And the twelve year, there is, at least twenty percent of the units have to be affordable.
Thirty-eight years more geared to, to encourage some kind of development in an area that's neglected and where the um twelve year is. Has that possibility and the additional of um affordable house.
Yes.
This was when I got my vote.
Twelve.
So, that's what I was thinking too, Tony, but then when Deborah mentioned. You know, the developers, because we looked at a presentation for North Kelsey and the developers wanted all residential. They couldn't make a pencil at that time, I think the all residential might be a bit of a mistake. Because once you build a residential, you can never go back to first floor commercial. So, I mean, we might have some sort of leeway there where we build it, first floor commercial, other two floors residential. And then allow them to, to make it residential for a period of time until it could, you know, commercial makes sense or something, but. But I think she made a really good point, you have to meet the developer, developer halfway to get things built. We need supply, because I was thinking that too, why would we waste our available supply? You know, to build market rate when they're just going to build a twenty-four hundred dollar apartment that, you know, maybe I can't afford. Um, so that's why I was thinking, it's got to be AM, eighty percent AMI or nothing, but I think we have to. You know, go around and around to figure out what we can get built. And where we can get, get it built, so we can kind of, you know.
Right.
We saw some of these concerns about, you know, you know, some of the pockets that, you know, are affordable now and. Randy mentioned, we don't want those folks to get rooted out where the developer buys four lots and puts sixteen units. But sixteen units could house a lot of families.
So if I understand you correctly, that by giving the eight year extension, well, we've had the twelve year, but it does, it's meaningless, it definitely gets filled.
Exactly.
But with the eight year, one of the attractiveness, uh, at least in your mind, I might agree with you once. Uh, is that uh just having new development gets to the whole supply and demand issue of the greater the supply and more stable the rents will be.
I don't think that was my argument, but I thought it was Deborah's great argument, just because she talks to developers. I talk to developers, but not in the city of Monroe more often than not, most of our businesses is outside Monroe, so.
But I see other people have lights now, be quiet.
So I just wanted to make a quick comment, um, so my thinking was because I, there already is an established residential targeted area. That um we could move this along quicker, but if it's the direction of the planning commission that we want to look at a different areas first before. Um, then it would take longer, but that's fine, because that would be the direction and then I can come back um at the next meet, next couple meetings and. Provide more information, um, and, but just letting you know, if we were going to look at US two, we'd have to change the zoning first. Because it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't allow uh mixed use or multifamily at this point.
Deborah, could you jump in for us? Give your mic. Okay.
Oh, that's red, it's when it's red, it's hot, right? Got it. I keep looking for it to go green.
Did you have, your mic was red?
I did not mean to weigh in.
But, you want to go next?
Um, I, I, I just had it turned on.
Okay. So, Randy.
So just last presentation with Mayor Thomas about being bold. Um, if we just continue on with the development area that's already been uh identified, that's old, that's old, that's from two thousand and nine. And we have to think outside the box, we have to look at what other cities are doing that are ahead of the curve. Because otherwise we're going to do planning that's behind the curve and so um I, I highly, highly, my request is that we. Find other targeted areas of where we want, the only benefit I see of this is that we get to decide. Where we're incentivizing development, because yes, development's going to occur in some of these areas no matter what. But um not with us saying, if we have a, if we have the ability to target where we would like it, that's what we're here to do.
Tony?
Yeah, you know, the other thing um is that this is ongoing process, we're in the comprehensive plan. Process and I'm sure it's going to be looked at Highway two, changing the zoning. And as we talk about this, one of the things is we can lay out a plan that says, when the comprehensive plan is completed. That we'll revisit this issue to look at zoning changes that took place in the city. And what, where else would this make sense to apply? So to look at this not as, this is the, this is the discussion, we're going to make a decision and that's the end of the discussion. But rather this is the first step of one, making sure we understand all the uh, um, the differences between the eight year, twelve year. Where is best um uh applied, um, making sure we understand that where. In the city presently that meets the state's criteria, the best to apply with it. Um, and as the first step, so understanding it. The questions that are before us to then find out where. In the city, it um, it can be applied to and I encourage that we look at other areas than the downtown. It's um, which we might include, but we might just include other areas too and then plan for when the comprehensive plan. Um, has completed and revisit this.
Liz?
Uh, thank you, I agree with Commissioner Blair and uh, Tony, I wanted to ask you, because you mentioned one hundred and seventy-ninth to. Um, five twenty-two, is that kind of, excuse me, more along Main Street or like? Main Street, I'm looking at a map over here, so I apologize, uh, to like. The US two, like that kind of diamond chunk area of town?
So it's a triangle, if I remember correctly, it's uh west of one hundred and seventy-ninth, north of Main Street. And then the third leg of the triangle is Highway five twenty-two, it's.
Yeah.
predominantly single family housing, it is own multifamily and I think that's one of the reasons why. It um, it was designated as an area of concern for displacement. And that was in the uh Housing Action Plan.
Okay. Just, because mostly what we've been sort of talking about was that North Kelsey and Long Highway two. But I could see where definitely that more in that triangle-ish area also being an area. You know, and we have to make sure transit. I think making sure we're fitting within that urban corridor and I think of where. Also making sure we're pairing this with the stronger displacement rules and making sure we're. Covering both sides of that to make sure. We're doing what we can so that we're not getting the displacement and. Um, because we definitely don't want that, that's counterintuitive to what we're trying to do. Um, you know, I think it makes sense to get more things on the books to. Incentivize getting these type of programs to encourage developers to come in, get the variety of housing we definitely need and a lot of us. I mean, we're all in agreement and we need it, it's just, how do we do it? Get the affordable housing in for our workers so we can get more units. In the right areas, so I appreciate Tony's feedback on that section, because I, I think that's the. Added information we've needed as well, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, I just was going to try to echo what um, uh, Ms. Knight said earlier, I think that this is an incredible tool to draw in. Housing, which as um Liz just said, I think we're all in agreement, Monroe needs more of it, especially. Um, more than just single family. And if, if the idea is we don't want displacement of already existing low income housing, but we do want more housing in Monroe. Then I think we shouldn't give up the opportunity to use a tool this powerful. Um, to bring in housing, so I, in my opinion, it sounds like the, the best route from here. Would be looking at rezoning north of, of Highway two, as Anita mentioned at the end, and obviously that's going to take. A lot more time and, and research, but I would hate to see kind of this idea die. Um, just because we're, we're only visualizing the downtown corridor, which, Brandy, you bring up such a great point about. The, the fear of a developer coming in and buying three low income houses. Cutting them all or, or knocking them all down, putting up townhomes and one of them is now low income, so I totally, totally see your point. But I don't think that we should. Uh, yeah, give up, give up this uh, this opportunity to, to use the tax credit, because clearly it's. It's a, it's a powerful one and as uh Deb said earlier, it can be a difference maker for a developer coming in. And adding twenty units or not having them at all, so.
Um, not saying that this is necessarily the route we would take, but I'm just asking for options, but is there anything that prohibits us from. Offering this exemption to new housing only?
Um, it, it does include rehabilitation.
Yeah, so we'd have, we'd have to include that, okay.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
But rea- rehabilitation does include adding additional units on the same building or the same block, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I could.
If I may, I thought it only, it only goes to creating new units, it might be an existing building. That you are remodeling to add units to it is my understa- I, at least anyway, that was my understanding, I could be wrong, it won't be the first time.
Um, yeah, let me double check, I'm just, just reading what the statute says and uh, let's see, new construction, conversion, rehabilitation of. At least four units.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you can accept that specifically, but we can look at that.
So it sounds like um maybe we're taking a step back and looking at other uh areas in the city where we want to. Establish the residential targeted area um before we get into actually um drafting a code. But I'll also um, the next meeting that I come to Planning Commission, make sure that I have more information as far as what other cities are doing. Provide you some maps um to show where their areas are. Um, and then possibly um give me some, some examples of what their code reads, if they picked the eight year, twelve year, what they did. So I can definitely provide you more information before um we get deeper into the discussion.
Thanks, Anita, yeah, because I think we do need to have some, a certain amount of discussion related to why. Multifamily developers aren't locating in Monroe.
Okay.
Because the rents are obviously high enough in my mind to make a project console. So it's got to be that we need additional zoning to accommodate their, their building. Because otherwise, why wouldn't they, you know, be here already? Right?
I think that's an important point that presently there's not much undeveloped land zoned for multifamily in the city limits. And just like any single family home builder, they like to have a large enough project for economy of scale. And if you were looking for someplace in Monroe to do sixty units, where would you go? That's undeveloped land, that's zoned for multifamily, I think that's one of the issues. The other issue is we looked where to apply this is, you know, I have a friend who's Hispanic and. He moved to the other side of Highway two and one of his neighbors said to him, how did he ever get on the other side of Highway two? And I raised that question because as we look where we want to make, ensure that there's affordable housing. Why is all the affordable housing always located in just one part of Monroe? And that's part of zoning issues?
Yeah, there's no multifamily though.
North of Highway two, is there? None.
And, and to your question about the uh, if somebody wanted to put in a sixty unit there, I, I can't think of a location. You know, the, the last remaining large parcel that I'm familiar with is at the corner of um. Blueberry Lane and one seventy-nine.
Uh, Blueberry Lane and one seventy-ninth?
Uh, Kelsey.
Kelsey, that's okay, and I believe there's.
I will eventually live here long enough to figure this out, I drive that all the time.
And I believe there's a project for a townhouse is there?
Yeah, so I did, I did um talk to a potential developer and um. I mean, he's looking at maybe doing apartments there, but the thing is still density, because um he can get seventy-five units, which is good, but. He, he wanted more, so, um, so that density is a question too, like, can we increase it at all or do something?
And after that, there's no other places, isn't there?
So Anita, you're saying that's three acres and he want, he wanted to build more than twenty-five acres?
Yeah, he was under the impression that the lake apartments um had a higher density, which I checked and they didn't, but it's just they had more property, it was ten acres, so, yeah.
Liz or Jake, which one of you uh first? Let's say, let's say Jake.
My question's a little bit old now, but Anita, I, I think you mentioned it last time, did Duval employ this tool? For their, all their new development that happened um west of two or three?
Um, I would have to check the list, I'm not sure if they have a program, oh, let me, let me check.
Okay, no worries.
I want to tell Jake's thunder, because he was first. Um. Obviously, the, we've got enough research on Anita's plate, but um. So that we don't get it lost, not that it would, but. At some point, can we also see what other cities are doing for? If they're strength, if we can see anybody else's examples of their strengthening their displacement rules? Just to see what other cities might be implementing, just curious.
Yeah, I know um a lot of the cities that did do the housing action plans, they do have some policies in there. Um, that's where I actually got some of ours is from other cities, um, but yeah, I, I think it's going to be um more relevant in this comp plan. Because it is a requirement, so I'm sure that, I'm sure there'll be a lot of uh more examples coming up, so yeah, I'll definitely check other cities as well.
Okay, and then my other thought was, I, I, I agree that. Definitely, obviously, I think we're all leaning this way, but instead of just limiting ourselves to like the North Kelsey area, I think we should. Consider more than just downtown, the North Kelsey, I think we should consider. Other options to having these available in the city. To have more opportunities for housing, because we do seem to have a limited of space. That these could be an option, so. If we can somehow have it in. Other areas and especially, so, you know, consider if there's some way. In the area that Tony's talking about, because Tony's right, there isn't. Anything there and that is closer to the high school, that's closer to the middle schools. You know, that's, that's a huge chunk of students, which I know is a passion of quite a few of us that have. Have students currently and future people that have students in the district, so. You know, that's, that impacts a lot of. Families and, you know, potentially displaced. Well, hopefully we'll be limiting the number of displaced, but. So if we can have more than, say, two locations or something, so.
And um I don't see that Duval is on the list of um cities that have an M F T E program.
Thank you.
Kelsey, jump in for us. Can't hear you.
You're on mute, Kelsey.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. I just wanna say it's, it's super helpful that um that presentation about where the tax burden is going. Um, that really helps on this decision, so thank you for presenting that cuz we were unclear of, you know, where that. Like, how it'd be dispersed over the people, the taxpayers and the homeowners, so thank you for that. That's all I wanted to say.
I wanted to say, I know uh I had specifically asked for examples of where this is working and not working, but. Um, I don't know if anyone else wants, if we can come to an agreement, but I don't know if it's as important to get what other cities are doing. But more important, I think we've kind of come to a new scope. It sounds like it's more important to everybody. Uh, not what everyone else is doing, but where could Monroe do this best? So our zoning of what's single family now? And where um. Where those other overlaid maps, kind of like that comp plan Mig was talking about. I know we've seen this before, an overlay of our low income levels of where people live uh based off of the tracks, like Tony's example. Or the highway, so an overlay of the same scope of a map that shows where the income of people is. And then our multifamily and single family designations, and we can have an agenda to actually have a discussion about it. Okay, that would be my, my new request rather than any other one wanting to know what other cities are doing.
Additional items, Tony?
Not at this time.
Okay. So I'm not suggesting this for Monroe, but I work in Linwood. And they're putting up parts of multifamily units in former commercial areas. So no displacement of affordable housing, um you know, they're taking down. Strip malls, um big commercial areas. So that's just, just, I I'm not saying that it's gonna work here, but. Something like that could. We look at all areas, not just what's zone multifamily or what, you know. What's zone, you know, residential at the moment.
Yeah, and I can also do two maps. I can do what the zoning is today and kind of layer the income levels and everything on one map. And then do a future map of we ever did change the zoning through the comp plan, so that way we can look at two different maps, maybe.
Okay, Lance?
One of the doubt, I mean, one just as to take into consideration is when. When you, when you upzone an area and 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 Tony brought it up, that we don't have a lot of. Vacant land in the residentially zoned areas. And so when you upzone those, you create this incentive to do infill, which we're, which we're seeing some. Not to a large scale, but um a couple of projects where they've bought property. And are taking down an existing house to put in five units. And so as you upzone and as you allow that higher density in those residential areas, the incentive becomes a little bit more to do. To do that. So that's, you know, you, you have to balance that out and you never know for sure how it's gonna turn out cuz it's so market driven.
But one of the things that needs to take in consideration as we look at infill and such is the infrastructure. Because there are parts within the old part of town that is still on um uh subject tanks.
Yeah.
And to expect so, even if the house burns down, if it's in the middle of the block, there's no way someone's gonna pay. To extend a sewer and then build a duplex or fourplex type of thing. So as we look at zoning and other issues, let's keep in mind um exactly what the infrastructure will allow and what's reality.
And we're doing, and and we're starting to do some of that or doing the background to be able to do that analysis uh for the comp plan. The development scenarios, uh cuz that's looking at areas where we have infrastructure. But can it handle an exponential increase in units? I mean, it's fine for detached housing currently, but there's a limit to how much you can hook into the system. And so we're, we're, so that background information that we're doing now as a part of the, the, the cop plan. Will feed into those land use scenarios that we'll, that we'll do and potential rezones as well.
In my understanding, we can do multiple areas. We can, that the city is not limited. It's basically what the city envisions for itself. What it can financially afford. And um those are the considerations as far as what, what areas we do. And we could have a mix. It can be both twelve year and eight year depending on what we see as the needs of this city is.
Thought we had to pick one.
It, it, they could, they don't have to all be the same.
And it's, it, his example was a million dollars, but it could twenty million dollars. He just rounded.
To make the, to make the analysis.
To make the analysis. We'd like to see twenty million dollars worth of new product out there, right? So keep that in mind that um that was just an example. It wasn't four units and a million dollars. And we're not just spending all of our time for, for additional units. This is, could be, you know, something that really changes the availability of housing.
The person who was who questioned about um Blueberry Lane and uh and North Kelsey. Am I pencil out if he had that exemption and be worthwhile going to do?
Yeah, I'm just looking at Everett's um list here, projects. Looks like they have eight and twelve year.
Deborah.
So I, I just had a question for Lance and Anita. We've tried two areas that the county is considering for extension of the urban growth area. And would those two potential urban growth extensions be eligible? For the tax exemption credit?
Yes, you go ahead. These will be going around this evening. I hope it's not catchy.
So the um, okay, so for the county's extension of the urban growth area, you're wondering if that could be included?
Yeah, exactly. And I don't know if now's the right time to, to add the, that discussion in, or if that's something that. We would have to circle back around during the comp plan update.
Okay.
I'd like to add it if we can, if you can look into it. That is something that Mayor Thomas mentioned last week too, uh was something like thinking about that kind of stuff. Instead of only a single family, could, could you do something like that?
No, I think one of the keys there is that what I've seen in Southern California particularly, if for anybody that grew up there. Has lived there as an adult is that they tend to put their multifamily close to their arterial streets. They're on the arterial streets and then they step back their single family. So you go from high density multifamily and then you do townhomes and then you do single family. And that might be again, something, you know, looking at Chain Lake Road in hindsight. You know, we should have considered in the past putting multifamily right on Chain Lake Road. And then the single family moving, you know, further back into the, into the neighborhood. So also something to consider as you're looking just at, are there opportunities for redevelopment along some of our arterial streets? I was giving that some thoughts, like what would that look like, for example, on, on one seventy ninth? But it would be displacement except for those few lots that are left that are currently, I think, under development.
What areas are this, is the city or the county considering extending the urban growth area?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, what areas?
I think it's sa- is it south?
Apologize, I feel like I've literally swallowed a feather.
The west of Tractor Supply on. Not Roosevelt, is it Roosevelt?
Yes, Roosevelt.
Roosevelt Road, thank you.
And Highway two.
Yep, and, and then the other one is uh up at the north end of the city limits.
Oh, north, like, um, okay.
One, one ninety second street.
Where it's already developed.
Yep.
Yep, I know exactly. Pretty much supply all the services there already, just don't collect the taxes.
Okay, Anita, you have enough direction.
Um, yes, I do. So I appreciate everyone's input. Um, I have a lot of research to do. Uh, hopefully I can bring this back. Um, let's see, maybe in a couple of months. I know we're gonna be busy with comp plans, so we'll see how that fits in.
Move on to section six, discussion by commissioners and staff. Start with um resume participants, Liz?
Um, I don't have anything.
Jake?
Uh, I didn't know if it'd be right to insert it during that discussion, but uh I had the realization the other night that we should think about. Expediting or making more important the conversation of the silent railroad crossings, especially as it relates to. Disproportionate impact on low income people. Um, we live a few blocks off the uh train tracks and. I just got my baby to sleep at about two AM and the, the train whistle blew, woke him up. And I'm like, I cannot imagine living right there on the tracks where you're just talking about more buildings being put, put up right next to Denny's on. Blueberry Lane and uh I think for a lot of folks who live outside that area, you don't think about it. But imagine raising a, a baby right there, it'd be, it'd be really tough, so uh I think that'll also help with future development as well. And uh Deb, or sorry, Ms. Knight, I think that is something that's in E-Dabs court right now.
For the train crossings, we currently have funding and are working on finalizing design. And moving into construction for the one on North Kelsey. For the ones on one seventy ninth and Frylands, uh we're currently out uh looking for funding for those projects. And we are actually working to submit an application to our state representative. Or excuse me, our federal representative, um Senator Murray's office. So there's thankfully more money coming out of the federal government right now for those types of projects. So it's at the top of the list, kind of next to um finish five two two. This one is second right underneath that.
Amazing. Thank you very much. Um, other than that, I don't have anything and appreciate the lively discussion from everyone tonight. And then obviously, thank you as, as always to staff for how much work you guys put into it. I think it's very easy for us to. Talk and just keep on stacking stuff on your guys' plate and you do all the hard work, so you are so, so appreciated and um, yeah.
Jake, Kelsey?
I just, um. Enjoyed our meeting last week, the combined meeting with um the city council. And I think um that went really well and just happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. That's up.
Um, yeah, I wanna make sure I'm not talking out of turn. On the agenda, it says discussion on planning commission meeting schedule. So I didn't know if that was a discussion that was going to happen aside from commissioner and staff conversation. I just don't wanna speak out of turn if, if that's something we were gonna do as a group. Okay, then I might have more comments on it, but um, thank you to staff for the presentations tonight. Thank you for all the hard work you're putting in. I echo um Jake and stuff that it is, it's easier, easy for us to forget sometimes from up here, just how much work goes in behind the scenes to. Put all this together to answer our questions and stuff, but you guys are very appreciated and it was um super informative. The two presentations combined tonight, so thank you very much.
I don't have much, but I would like to say thank you for the presentation. Super shout out to Anita. Um, being new to this, to the planning commission, you always explain everything in like, you know. Newbie terms. Let me say that. I don't wanna use the word dummy, but um you make everything like plain. And you're very thorough with your explanations and I really wanna thank you. I can see the hard work that you're putting in. And just know it is greatly appreciated.
Um, I also thanks everyone uh for tonight's information and discussion. Um, I just wanna plant in everyone's head when we are talking about comp plan stuff. Um, if everyone starts looking at our walkability of Monroe, um Highway two. Getting from downtown to Highway two, walking down our streets, um I, I, I use the word. I, I don't feel like it's safe for people, kids uh walking around right now. So if, if you don't already walk, just maybe think of it as if you were a walker in a situation. Look at our crosswalks, I mean, our corners where they're dark. Um, I'm looking for people and don't always see them. It's luckily getting lighter in the mornings now for kids walking to school. Um, but just keeping that in mind as that's gonna be one of my forefront ideas for walkable stuff in the comp plan update. And if, if you guys could keep an eye out for that too, um I'd be thankful.
Thanks, Brandy. And speaking of walkability and and to Jake's idea about Fryland's Boulevard and, and making that safer. Um, city of Linwood has eight red light cameras and two school zone cameras. Generating about nine million dollars a year. If we could get a red light or a, a school zone camera there. In one year, I think it would pay for your pedestrian overpass and you wouldn't need those flags to cross Frylands. Think about attending a city council and presenting that option where it pays for itself. And you can get across Frylands without uh dodging guys doing forty five.
I'm thinking a wildlife bridge too, maybe.
All right, and I wanna as well, thanks staff. Anita, always appreciate you. Thanks for being here, Lance. I know um Kate couldn't be here, so I appreciate that you getting here on probably fairly short notice. That's a feather, Lance. That's your feather. You popped, you popped it up here. Deborah, really appreciate you being here. Thank you for um all your input and, and helping us along in this process. Um, sometimes these things are very difficult when you have an expert come on and there's a lot of numbers to absorb. Especially for people that aren't familiar with how these projects get done and how we attract. Um, you know, the right kind of developers or any kind of developers to town. So your insight on, you know, folks that have called you and said, this is how I, you know, the feasibility says this. You guys just don't have the zoning or the programs or whatever. And that's, you know, kind of why we're here is to help facilitate that, so make, you know, the city better. Make residents, you know, appreciate whatever, you know, what the government does for them and. So, thank you. Lance, you're next.
Red means go, greens means stop. But to, to that point, uh this is the second time that I've gone through uh a discussion. About adopting the F, the multifamily tax exemption and it's, you can just. I, I appreciate that, I think the conversation tonight was really felt more about specific local needs and desires. Because, you know, you've got this framework of this program that's being done in a lot of different places. But every, every, every community's a little bit unique. And I know some of the communities that early adopted. Some provisions have changed over time and it's in that, that table. I know that's been, that Anita's presented, so. I think this was some really good feedback for staff to kind of narrow in to Monroe, Monroe program, so I appreciate that. Um, the question had come up and hopefully with the last hundred words that I may have left him. whatever, maybe I did cough that feather up, I don't know. I hope, I hope that's not where it went. But, uh, there, there was, um, a question came up or a request to consider potentially changing schedule for when planning commission is meeting. Um, and the suggestion was to go from the second and fourth Mondays to the first and third, and, um, so staff had looked at what, what that would look like, um, and there's, as we looked at it, there were a number of obstacles that came up. One of them was, um, federal holidays are generally on Mondays that are off planning commission meetings. Um, we also have a potential issue with some of the, with the availability of, of rooms. So then there was, and, and that has to do with if we were not gonna do, um, continue to do with a Monday, but look at doing it on a different day. The only other day that would work is Friday, and I don't think anybody really wants to do that. That's not very feasible. Um, the other thing, as we look through some of the documents to, or just looked at the process of recruiting planning commissioners, and in the application, uh, it says when we have meetings, so people are applying with an expectation that those would be those days, and I know that the city's been doing meetings on this current schedule for many years. I don't know how far it goes back, but it's, it's, it's not a new thing. Um, and, and, and so having said that, I think from the staff's perspective, we, our recommendation would be to stay with the schedule that we currently have. Based, based on the, those factors that I had just mentioned, so I don't, I don't know what other input the planning commissioners may have.
Yep, um, so I want to, I want to preface this with, um, that I think that the way that I presented this question was not in the best way, the last thing I did, but that it didn't illustrate like my heart and my intent behind even asking about this, because, um, another thing with planning commissioners is that when I was interviewed, it was, it was, and I'm, now I'm one of the older, there's only a couple of people that are that have been here longer than, um, three of us that came on at the same time, so we're not so new anymore, but, um, we I was interviewed with an expectation that equity would be at the forefront of discussions. We have talked multiple times in these meetings about, um, looking at things through an equitable lens and um, for me, I'm super passionate about open government and then access and having equitable access to as many things. Not just with the city, but with any entity, county, uh, school, um, any of that, that people have access to it. Now I we are not the most popular meeting in terms of like public comments and public people showing up, and I get that. Um, but just having the availability there, and however long ago it was set, this, this meeting goes over another like the school board meetings, and so the overlap and stuff there to me isn't super equitable, whether that's from, you know, we could say, well, then maybe the school board should change, or, you know, there's two entities that have control over their meetings on, on that particular day. We are one of them. Um, and so just the ability for like people to serve, for people to participate in the open government and the overlap there. Um, I feel that just overall, I, I would have this opinion whether it was planning commission over it, or if it was to SAB that was tonight, and just having, um, or any of the other boards or commissions that the city operates is just having the meetings in this community overlapping too much takes away the ability for people to have full access to their open government, and I am here, I'm committed to planning commission. I did interview knowing it was these nights. Um, and, and stuff, but in terms of like moving forward, I feel that there are people who might consider you know, applying for the next open position, but they are committed to going to the school board meetings, or even vice versa, it's just that. Um, and so that was, my heart behind it is really to look at it from an equitable standpoint and giving as many people as possible access to all of those meetings within this community, within the wider community, and so um, I understand, I understand staff's standpoint, and I'm not even sitting here saying that I would vote in favor necessarily of, or even push for changing, actually changing the meeting. I think the discussion is important to have. Um, as a reminder, with planning commission, and I don't want this to sound harsh because I appreciate staff so much, but these meetings belong to us. I've been reminded by a beloved former commissioner who was on here for a long time and has served the city for a long time, that these meetings belong to us. So yes, it is important that we not sit there and say, well, you know, staff doesn't matter, we can do what we want. That's not what I'm saying. But they do belong to us as the commissioners. Um, and I also don't think that an argument of, well, this is how it's always been done, is necessarily always the best approach, because sometimes progress means making changes, sometimes progress means, you know, moving for, doing something different, and whether that means it's better or the same, or maybe it changes, then we're like, okay, well, that was a big mistake for XYZ. But I don't think that saying that this is the way it's always been done is a justifiable reason to not consider. So again, I say all this, not even saying that I want to push to move a meeting, but I think that the discussion is important because as planning commissioners, we have been tasked to look at things through an equitable lens and when our meeting dates and times are, is still part of that job. So that is where my heart and my mindset came from in asking for this discussion in the first place, and I don't feel like I illustrated that well when I approached it at the last meeting, so.
I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Um, I'd like to request a motion to extend the meeting past our scheduled end time. Sorry.
I mean, that we extend the meeting past nine o'clock.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So I don't think Lance was saying this is why, this is how it was always been done, that's why we do it. There's, there's reasons why that it's always the second and fourth Tuesday. Some of them calendar federal holidays, some of them just because procedurally, this is how it functions better, so the, you know, we meet, we're an advisor to the city council, so we meet, it gets pushed up to the city.
Jay, can you lean forward? I'm sorry, you have excellent stature, but I can't.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
So I was just saying that it's not because necessarily because it's always been done that way, procedurally, it just works better that way. Correct me if I'm wrong, that we meet, you know, before a city council meeting and, you know, we can recommend, I'm not sure that they do every time, recommend the very next day, but that's, there's procedures in place and, you know, so there was, there's no actual business reason for planning commission to change dates. I mean, there's, there might be wishes due to some other commitments, but for an actual business purpose, um, we've never, you know, I, I just, that's just, the, you know, nobody has come to us with, with that request, that's why it was a little, you know, everybody was kind of confused about what would the business purpose be of, of changing dates? How would that make planning commission better?
Uh, my, mine's red, so it's all right if I speak. I, I heard, um, Lance did a good job of explaining all the different reasons and um, I, and I hear yours too, um, but as far as what Melanie's bringing up, equitable access to all of our community meetings, um, is something we should discuss a little further. I mean, I, I see that point of it, that, and why, why does it help our business with planning commission? Well, because planning, partially what we're planning for is the future, and these kids that are at school are a large part of our community and are the future of the community, so a lot of people's worlds overlap with that, and, or some people just want to, you know, know what all the different agencies in the city are doing. So, um, I don't want Melanie to think that this is all a big no, but maybe that we can, we know the the issue and maybe we can think more about it.
I just want to chime in, um, I too agree, um, with both Melanie and Brandy. I just think in our community, um, partnership and just being able to serve and being able to be included is very important. Um, the equitable access is important and I knew when the meetings were, when I was interviewed, that's, that, I knew that. Um, but as a parent of seven children in the Monroe School District, I unfortunately, there's not a lot of partnership and with like the city and the district and even with the boards or whatnot, and I just think it speaks to a more inclusive lens when we even, when we can even just discuss it. Procedurally, it's been second and fourth, that's how it's been. Um, but business-wise, like, how is that, how is that helping? I mean, how is second and fourth, you know, helping versus one and third? It's, I know it's difficult to even think about changing something, but I think like Brandy said, we should at least, um, discuss it. I'm new to the board, but I faithfully do attend school board meetings because my children are in this school district and that there are things that go on that I have to be there, like today, tonight, we came straight over from a board meeting here, and I mean, I'm a writer, I could do that. But I'm just saying, like, we should really like consider the whole, even people who don't serve on the commission, like, no one's here tonight, but what if there's a meeting that they do want to come to, and I don't know, just thinking about everyone and seeing it from just a whole inclusive lens, um, I think that's really important, so.
Um, to address the, how will it affect business if we do move to the first and the third? Um, there's five holidays that are affected. It's a federal act, um, that says that these Mondays are when they're federal holidays. So that would be five meetings of ours that would be canceled. It's four or five, um, and as, I just wanted to point that out.
Liz.
I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm understand and I hear what other commissioners are saying, I mean, I don't know if the school board meetings are still being televised on Zoom like they were previously. So I haven't been able to join in a while, but, um, I know, I've also made sacrifices, because you know, I'm on two city commissioner meetings, I'm on E-Dab and I'm here. I didn't make E-Dab because I was in Mecateo for a Snow Isle meeting, um, for my daughter, so. It's a balance and we all have to make priorities. I apologize for the dog. Um, sorry about that. And I get it, we're all community members, you know, some of us are business owners and community members and it's, you know, the balancing of the kids, the school district, our city appointments, um. But we also have to take into account too, the staff, city council. Um, we make recommendations to city council, city council times things based on our recommendations. I mean, so, I mean, it's not just a simple changing, it doesn't just impact us, it impacts city staff and not just city planning staff, but a lot of other different departments, so, not that we're not, I, I don't think we should not consider it, but we impact a lot of different departments and other people than just this commission, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Um, so and we all did sign the agreement and I'm not saying we shouldn't think about it, but, I mean, when we signed up, we're, I mean, I agreed to these dates, um, and I make sacrifices and I shift my own personal schedule to make the dates work, because that's what I agreed to. That was my personal commitment to the committees, the commissions that I chose to be on. I prioritize. I quit other not-for-profits to prioritize this over other things. Um, these are what we have to decide on what our priorities are. I, I mean, I just have to say that's, it, it's hard, but we have to figure out which is, which are our bigger passions and not saying that we're putting our kids secondary, because that's never what any of us do. It's the balancing act of figuring out how we balance it all. That's all I'm saying.
Thanks, Liz. Move on to Anita.
I don't have anything to report tonight, um, but just want to let you know that so, um, the two restaurants were mentioned at a previous meeting and there is one more coming possibly. And I'll be able to let you know about that once permits come in.
I think we only got hints on one.
Oh.
Wait, Wingstop?
Wingstop and Eurostop.
Eurostop.
Yeah, and then there's one more, but I'll let you know at a further date.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned. That's all I have.
Deborah, any final thoughts for us?
Touch it now, because I do it wrong every time. A couple of things, I just wanted to follow up on, um, Commissioner Blair's comments about uh, walkability and safety. We have a couple of upcoming projects. One is coming through the Parks Department and they're going to be doing, uh, complete, um, multimodal trails planned, so that might be an opportunity to, um, put in some comments or provide some feedback from the planning commission to the Parks Board about areas of the community that need to, um, have some attention. And then the Public Works Department is actually working on a grant submittal for Safe Walks to School. And so there's going to be a significant outreach project, trying to pull in the high school students from the engineering group to help us do some outreach and, and some planning around Safe Walks to School, so that's a second program that's up and coming, so we'll try and keep you informed, so you have an opportunity to participate or weigh in, whatever makes most sense to you. And, oh, the second one was red light cameras. Uh, I think that there is an, an interest at the staff level, but I think we need some, uh, some support, um, perhaps from boards and commissions, uh, making recommendations to council that we should install red light cameras somewhere. Previously in the community, if you're not aware, they've been very unpopular, so.
But if, if you've ever been in school zones, I don't know about Main Street by Frank Wagner, but um, by Frylands, minimum forty-five, there, so I guarantee you're gonna get your million bucks a year.
They previously, they previously had a red light camera in that area and that was the one that was particularly, um, uh, had a particular attention from community members and they wanted that one removed specifically, uh, as I recall, so. Uh, red light cameras were supposed to support our court, and just as our court was started, the red light camera program um, went away, and so we've been funding our community court and other court services through the general fund ever since, it's unfortunate.
Elementary school, and the other one was on, um, North Kelsey and Highway Two. And I was at the city council meeting when city council got lunch. That's why my neck is so long.
As you recall, like I said, support from board and commission members would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Tony? And we have some other members of your group.
No, I just want to thank the planning commission for having this joint meeting and it's been very informative and I look forward to, uh, future meetings and again, Steph, I appreciate greatly all you do. I know it's a difficult job.
Jake, I'm gonna let James jump in here.
Oh, thank you. I just want to say thanks for, uh, uh, letting that just have join. I unfortunately, uh, didn't make it on time, but uh, I know Tony is very knowledgeable, so he, he has most of our knowledge on this topic, so just thanks for, uh, collaborating with us and, uh, look forward to doing it again.
Thanks, James, and thanks Rachel for being here. Jake, did you have anything, uh, additional?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to add it in my earlier comments. I just want to also say, Tony, we so appreciate your input tonight. Um, I would appreciate if you sat in more often, just to give us that insight, so, thank you. Um, I would appreciate if you sat in more often just to give us that insight. So thank you. And to all the CHSA members, appreciate the joint meeting.
Thanks, Jake. Hannah, um, you have things for us?
Um, well, to James, if you do want to see the presentations or any other discussion that you missed, um, I usually put the meetings up on the city YouTube account the day after. So they're available to watch there. Um, otherwise, thank you to everyone for the great conversation tonight. It was really good dialogue. And Kelsey kind of stole mine. Happy Valentine's Day. I was gonna get you Valentines, but I didn't know what kind of candy you like, so.
You wouldn't care to move for Germany? She's loving it here.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
My second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Most motion passes. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.